Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn? Mr. Wexler?
Here. Dispensary reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority held November 6, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them quietly. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. The Lackawanna County Commissioners put out another Code Blue. For anybody who hasn't been outside, it is absolutely freezing out there lately. Code Blue was put into effect on 8 o'clock on Tuesday, and it's going to run until this Saturday, the 16th. Code Blue, again for us who forget or don't want to remember, is alerted when the forecasted temperature in Lackawanna Colony, including wind chills, is expected to reach 20 degrees Fahrenheit or lower. The goal of this is to notify as many people as possible about the cold and extreme conditions and provide information related to the health and wellness in cold weather, and publicize locations of emergency homeless shelters that are operated by area social service agencies. During a Code Blue alert, homeless individuals can access emergency shelter at the following locations: St. Anthony's Haven, 409 Olive Street, Scranton; their hours are 7:30 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., and the Community Intervention Center at 445 North 6th Avenue, and that is 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
I have one. I'd like to remind everybody that you can still vote for the 2018 PA River of the Year by going to pariveroftheyear.org and voting for the Lackawanna River. And that's all I have.
I did speak to Councilman Gahan today, and he asked me to read this statement. "I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. I am still recovering from unexpected emergency surgery that I had last week. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year," and we all wish Mr. Gahan a swift and speedy recovery. "We'd like to wish a happy Hanukkah to those celebrating this week. May the Festival of Lights bring blessings upon you and all your families." Tonight's meeting will be council's last meeting of 2017. The council will meet again on Monday, January 1st, at 10:30 a.m., unless a special meeting would be necessary before that date. Council will hold their reorganization meeting on January 1st at 11:00 a.m.
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
Leslie Collins?
Good evening, Council. I'm Leslie Collins, and I'm the Executive Director of Scranton Tomorrow. I would like to thank Council for your consideration of the legislation that is on the agenda this evening in the amount of $250,000 for the implementation of the Downtown Economic Development Strategy. I also would like to thank you for your support throughout the years for Scranton Tomorrow. Scranton Tomorrow is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, community and economic development organization which was founded in 1992, and for more than two decades, we have worked to address critical challenges facing the greater Scranton area. Within the past decade, our organization has focused primarily on the downtown core business district as a state of Pennsylvania designated and nationally accredited Main Street organization. The national Main Street approach produces both tangible and intangible results: the strengthening of public participation through grassroots-driven initiatives, the building of strong community partnerships for the betterment of our region, and providing advocacy and serving as a community convener and intermediary, all intangible services yet very vital for forming a cohesive downtown community. More tangible outcomes, including safe, clean, and green activities, small business promotions, and historic preservation efforts that we have produced through our facade improvement program, all aim to rekindle entrepreneurship. Scranton Tomorrow has emerged as an important ally to a community that faces many challenges, and guided by its vision of Scranton as a vital and vibrant urban center of northeastern Pennsylvania, our organization has marshaled resources to tackle old problems and to embrace new and exciting opportunities. Looking to the future, we recognize that maintaining a healthy central business district is essential to improving the economic climate of the greater Scranton region. Creating jobs and retaining and attracting young people to our community are critical. Within the past year, we have had the pleasure of working very closely with the city of Scranton, the National Resource Network, and community stakeholders in developing a strategy serving as a catalyst for a business improvement district. This model, the Business Improvement District, has been proven to be successful throughout the country and also serves as the next step for the national Main Street formula which we have undergone over the last decade. The plan includes items which are outside the realm of the municipal duties. The activities which would be undertaken will complement the great work of the municipal departments and will allow for private-public partnerships to thrive and to drive future economic development activities. We have recently successfully secured a local share account, the LSA Funding Grant, in the amount of $115,000 to be utilized solely for downtown beautification purposes, and this process will begin in the spring of 2018. We are continuing to work diligently on applying for additional grants for physical downtown improvements, website design, downtown branding, events, and all of the components that go along with the thriving economic structure. We also continue to meet with stakeholders within our community and foundations in preparation of putting forth the Economic Development Strategy. Scranton Tomorrow is energized by the tasks at hand, and we respectfully ask for your support for this collaborative economic development initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Hodewanitz?
Joan Hodewanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. Any word on the Noles insurance list? You know, it's been almost nine full months. I could've had a baby in that amount of time. But, okay, I'll keep asking in January. How about the Arcata Stormwater Management Study? Have we got any kind of idea when that's going to blossom into a product?
Sometime, maybe first quarter next year, maybe second quarter next year.
Oh, good God. Okay. I'm interested in the revitalization of the downtown largely because of self-interest, because I live downtown and have for eighteen-some years. But I've got to tell you, I often feel bad for the residents of the other sections of the city. The vast majority of Scranton's taxpayers do not live downtown like I do, and I sometimes wonder if they don't feel that they don't get an equal focus. And I understand that the downtown's an economic driver, but think of people like Mr. Young and his odyssey on Wyoming Avenue. Think of the projects that have languished over the years, like the Novembrino Pool Complex, okay, things like that. Sometimes I think that the other sections of the city get short shrift, and I don't know the answer, because I know that resources are limited and funds are limited. But as we revitalize the downtown, we shouldn't ignore the fact that the burden of the tax base is not downtown, it's in those surrounding neighborhoods. So I hope that in 2018, we can find some way of focusing on them also. And finally, Mr. Wexler, I know this is your last council meeting, I want to wish you well. I didn't always agree with you and your decisions, but I respect the work you've done for the city, and I hope you continue to serve in some capacity in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I wish you all a wonderful holiday, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, if that's politically incorrect, too bad, and hopefully I'll see you on January 1st for reorganization. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring your baby. Lenny Cerebro?
Good evening, Council. Lenny Cerebro, Scranton resident. I'd like to put the council stuff aside for a second. Really, I wish you, you know, happy holidays. All right. I came here actually to come down on Bill Gahan, not really, but I understand, you know, like he's got medical problems, but I really did come to see him. I didn't know he was sick. What I'm going after right now is the Commissioner, Laureen Cummings, said she's in the process of writing a letter to the mayor, and if he doesn't respond, she wants to go there. I'm assuming she means his office. Well, about a month ago, Bill said the same thing. He was upset about, you know, like that nobody's answering or nobody's giving any answers to this, and, you know, he said that he wanted to go there if somebody doesn't get back to him. So we got two people. I'm hoping that after he recovers, I understand the medical problems he's having. I even have him myself. I have a fear of water. But if somebody would get a message to him, you know, that that's what I'm going after.
A message to who? Mr. Gahan?
Yeah. About, you know, I'd like to follow up on if he didn't get an answer, you know, like he said, he wanted to go down there.
Just to interrupt you, he has been in touch with the office on a daily basis. Mrs. Reed will pass the message on to him when he calls in.
He'll pass, she'll pass the message on to Bill?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thanks.
Bob Bowles?
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. On 7C, last week I had raised some questions I had about it. I'd like to applaud Leslie for coming in and setting straight exactly what Scranton Tomorrow is about and what they intend to do, and I think she very clearly justified the spending of the $250,000, which is going to benefit the area, and I'm glad she came here because we had doubts. I know I had a bunch of them, and she did a great job on telling us where they're heading and what they wanted to do, and that was the questions I raised, like what are we getting for our money? So I think it was well worth her coming here today, and I think people appreciate the fact of what they really can do, and they didn't run in high, she came right out here in the open. So I'd like to wish her a Merry Christmas and everything else, and the group that's going to do it, I hope they're successful in the venture because we need it. One of the things I had was last week was about the parking garage over at the mall. I still want to know where our VIP parking spaces are and that we're not going to pay to go in and out of the mall, and I think there's accountability that has to be done, and I would ask Council to send a letter and have Basaliga tell us exactly what we got for our money. That's something we haven't had so far, and to share the money that he took on St. Patrick's Day back to the city and the citizens here, because those were our spaces. He has no right to give them out to anyone else but us. The other thing I do have is, it's a little thing, what is Christmas and what does it really mean to everyone? Well, to me, for 24 years, I've been doing a Christmas dinner here, and I'm inviting, again, to the 24th Annual Bob Bowles Senior Christmas Day Dinner that's held at St. Pat's Church on Jackson Street. It's from 12 to 6:00. You don't need a reservation. Alls you need to do is bring your appetite, bring yourself, and come and enjoy the camaraderie and what the spirit of Christmas means. It's an all-day buffet. If you attend the dinner, you take a takeout home. We also deliver to people. We're delivering two meals to a family. Anybody who has more than that there, then they could come to the dinner and enjoy what it's about, take a takeout home. You don't need a reservation, and what you need to do is just call my office. I'll give you the number, it's area code 570-346-7659. And doesn't matter the difference who you are or what you are, it's open to everyone who just doesn't want to be at home alone on Christmas. And it's something that, when I started it, I never thought I'd ever get to the magnitude it is today, but we had over 3,000 people last year. And I want to thank everybody that participates in it, especially the people that come to the dinner and eat what we prepare, and the volunteers that show up. Just shows what Scranton is really about, and that kind of ties into Scranton Tomorrow and the other things of who we are, because we're doing things here that nobody else is doing. Just like I said with the mayor, with the Spirit Ride, and the move over laws with our first responders and everything else, Scranton out of 140 cities is the only one that gave the key to the city, and that was remarkable. And now, after I raised the issue and presented the key to the Spirit Riders and the organization, they're now making it something that everybody else does in other states, they're asking them to do it also. And those are some of the things that we've done around here and made a big difference in who we are and what we're all about. I know we all have our battles, but one thing that we need to see is, on Christmas Day, we all put them aside and remember what Christmas is about. It's about family, it's about unity, and it's about all of us enjoying the one day where everybody's equal, and that's the most important thing that goes on. One thing I would like to say is, I'm sorry Bill isn't here. I told him we would've did the surgery for him and had him here a lot quicker, but from the skunk family, you know, I want to wish him a Merry Christmas, I really do, and I hope he has a speedy recovery. You know, I mean, the skunks are going to be around a long time, whether he likes it or not, he's going to have to engage him at one point or another. But I think we've accomplished a lot. Joe, you and I have had our battles, but we can still walk outside the door and shake hands and go forward. That's what this lectern's about, that's what we come here for. This is a room that's built on debate, and that's what an intent is. Everybody comes debates, say what they have to do. But in the end, we all hope that we follow a pattern that rebuilds the city and makes it stronger for the future generations. Again, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and if you all get thrown out of the house, you know where to come for dinner.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Ron Elman?
May I give this to?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, bud.
Hello, Council. I wish everybody a good New Year and a Merry Christmas. A few short... Now, this reminds me of a kangaroo with a pouch. I like these kind of shirts. A few short months ago, Mr. Bazzoni was telling the city that downtown is in dire need of a half million dollars, some grants, loan forgiveness, and tax incentives, and... As far as tax incentives, look at all the people downtown not paying taxes. The list is unbelievable. Linden Street, Vine, Jefferson, Madison, Wyoming, Lackawanna, Spruce. It's just, it's... What's, being the jewel of the city, are living off the people, the other 99% of the people around here paying their taxes. Then, last week, Mr. McKenna wrote this flowery article. All of a sudden, people are beating the doors down to live downtown. We need more apartments. We need the streets cleaned. We need more bars and restaurants. I haven't seen a street sweeper on North Main Avenue probably 15 years. 12, 15 years. See, everything that everybody in government in this city does, it's for the 1% of downtown. Downtown's a dinosaur, people. What was good then isn't necessarily good now. The mall is a dinosaur. A mall is supposed to be shops. Shops, not businesses like classrooms and aquariums, shops where you can buy things. They've failed to do that. A couple years ago, two or three years ago, I don't remember when, I suggested a marketplace in that building like they have in Allentown and Pottstown that's informal, and they are absolutely packed to the... Every time I've been there, people, they just... This one, nobody, it's just, it's just not handled right. Well, my friends, for every sunny day, nature balances it out with rain, in our case, snow, I guess. Just as the weather can change, fate can change too. I hope, I hope this coming government does well. I even go to lift my hex on you, Wayne, yes, for the holidays, anyway. But I wish everybody the very best New Years.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got one thing, if somebody knows how to house break a puppy, I wish they'd tell me. I'm not being very successful. He even seems to avoid the paper that's all over the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Now, we had a little bit of snow. I hope tomorrow is Paper Day in Upper South Side. I have a lot of stuff to go, and the next time I'll see it gone is probably around the first of the year, so...
They took them today on East Mountain. They took them all.
All right. Great, great, because I try to recycle everything I can, and, by the way, my coffee grounds and stuff like that go into the garden, you know? I mulch all that stuff, but it's really kind of, I don't want it there through the holidays. Don't forget to tune in to DCReport.org online. A lot of interesting things on it. One of the things that occurred to me, and I know it's a national issue, why don't we start granting a few tax breaks for corporations that raise their wages? If people don't have money in their pocket, you're not going to have an economy, anyway. You can have all the stores you want, but if the stuff sits there on the shelf, it's not doing any good, and if you have 300 houses on your roster, that's not help for your business, so we really need to look at the type of wages people are being paid, and they are working people, and 80% of the people that collect food stamps or SNAP, if you want to call it that, and Obamacare and so forth, they are working people, so they just don't have enough to go around. Two weeks, I guess it was last week, we had the people in about the gerrymandering, and I think my idea's a little better with a straight-line geographic to take in the necessary amount of people. However, at any rate, we also have, I spoke to a lady about Pennsylvania back with Obama, and she was 88 years old, she lived in Carbondale, and she went down for her photo ID, and it was, she didn't know better, but it was the day that all the high schoolers come in to get their photo ID license, so it was like stand in line at 88 years old for two hours and finally get your photo ID. She couldn't stay, and fortunately, she was allowed to vote, but we have to stop the silliness here. Everybody just got a little friendlier, they could get themselves elected. PA American Water, 11%, that's kind of concerning. I was opposed to, years back when they came up with that law, that we were going to be paying for coolest socks out in the country occupied by a lot of wealthier people hanging in, out in the country, driving forever, and then they want their water services subsidized. Well, when it comes to us poor people in Scranton, forget about it, you know? That's not acceptable. So some consumer group took it to court. We should've took the law to court to begin with and forgot about all of this. I hope things turn out all right, but it doesn't look good. And we have a state representative that is from, represents part of Scranton. In the paper every day that he's not showing up in Harrisburg, and I would appreciate if some of the officials from Scranton called him, and please try to find it in his heart to show up and take a vote. For instance, he missed a vote on a gas line, or the Marcella Shale gas, and when those pipelines go in, they can distribute it here, or they can take it to the Chesapeake Bay or somewhere else, liquefy it, and sell it to China if they want. So it may not, we've had some fair gas prices originally, but someday, they may not be so fair. They may be based on a world, the world market. Thank you, and have a nice holiday. Merry Christmas, even from Doubting Thomas here.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start by requesting that, since you're going to be off for two weeks in December, that you all end tonight's meeting before you adjourn by singing us a Christmas carol. I think that would be appropriate.
You didn't think we tortured you enough to hear it?
7C. You know, going back in time, 70s, there was a big urban renewal program. In the 90s, there was another program for downtown. In the first decade of this century, we spent a bundle downtown, and I would like to know, you're getting the materials for the double pension to find out what went wrong and changing things. I don't think you should be handing out a quarter of a million dollars until you can tell us why. What's going to be different this time? This is four separate, this will be the fifth investment in the downtown. This is four separate, this will be the fifth investment in the downtown. Why did the others fail? Why do we need another one so fast? I, I think those are important questions. So, I would like to hear those. I would also like to, maybe during Fifth Order, if the, the pension issue with the investment, if the pensions have not been revised to your liking, would you please tell, tell the public what it is that needs to be done yet to make it acceptable to get that money transferred into the pension fund? That would be appreciated, certainly. And another thing that would be nice to close out is the, the issue of trash. I do not understand two things, and maybe you could tell us tonight. Who is doing this study that is supposedly being done? The agency, so we can follow up with that? And then, I don't understand why the recyclables, all of which we taxpayers buy and put out to the curb and pay to have it picked up, why the proceeds of that do not go into the trash fund? Into the same account as our three hundred dollars, or, I don't know, is, is it still going to be three hundred next year, or is the same thing going to apply, that you get ten percent off?
Yes, the discount will still apply next year.
Okay. But I think that would help to reduce it further, and I think all the proceeds from the recycling should go back into that account. Are we going to be changing, either changing the Home Rule Charter, or are we going to just keep ignoring the fact that it exists and we're mishandling the way the trash is, the trash deposits are made for the fees and the dispersals?
I'm not sure. I don't think we're going to change it.
Maybe we could have that answer in January. I think it's important, if you, if you're not going to do it, I think it should be done. But if you're not going to do it, then change it. As a matter of fact, I think the new council, one of the things we have to start, it's certainly been a lot more than five years before we reviewed the Home Rule Charter. I think it's time that we have a Home Rule Charter review, because not everything is going the way it should be, I don't think. Have any of the newly created positions for next year been advertised, and if so, where?
I'm not aware that they were yet.
Could we find out, or ask, at least?
Sure.
And then the parking board. Mr. Wexler, last week, you said something about before, I thought you said before the meeting, there's going to be something?
Yes.
So, if the regular meeting starts at six, that means?
No, it'll be published days before. There's going to be a report days before this SPA meeting, so the documents can be reviewed by the public.
Okay, well, the, the meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, and you haven't seen anything yet?
No, not yet.
And what, now, you're, you're the representative on that board, who will be the representative next year? Is it always the president?
The way it's established, it's the mayor, the controller, the council president.
Okay. Thank you. I did have another, I don't understand the, the problem. What are, what is our insurance premium based on if not the properties and capital that we have to insure? How, are we, are we not paying it, are we? What happened to the insurance? I mean, if we don't have a list of, of what's being insured, how can we know that we're paying the proper premium?
Well, we have a list, we just haven't seen it yet, because it's been, still circulated, I guess, throughout the departments for final okay, to make sure there's no errors on that final list, which, which will have a crack at it as well.
That's going on too long. Somebody needs, somebody needs to.
Totally agree with that.
Light a fire.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I hope everybody has a blessed Christmas and a beautiful white Christmas and healthy New Year.
Okay, thank you, too.
Andy Sprague says, "Fells continueance to I wish everybody a happy holidays before I get into this." As you know, the water company is planning to charge us eleven percent instead of the one point nine percent, like you so touted, and everybody, the politicians got up and said, "This is the best thing to go. They're going to do this, they're going to do that." They had no intention of doing it. You plan to ask the sewer authority to file lawsuit for breach of contract with the water Okay, I didn't take you an answer. Tell me the truth, how much is Bo Cabbage getting for leasing the Electric City Garage? You're on the board, you should know the amount they're being paid. Don't answer that either.
No, this is your comment period, Mrs. Spragley.
I know. It doesn't matter, you're not going to answer it anyway.
This is your comment period, it's not my question and answer period.
I know. Why answer people's problems?
Because this is not the place for, from that podium. It won't be the place come January, either.
I don't know.
This is your comment period, it's not question and answer period. Continue.
I think you're all involved in a cover-up. You should have known that the water company couldn't do what they planned to do, and you touted it before the people of Scranton. Somebody told a lie. I know you're not going to answer who told the lie, because you don't like to answer people's problems, anyway. So, I don't have to, I don't have to worry about that.
Mrs. Spragley, we've been helping people with problems for four years here.
The man back there has been having a problem for the last three years.
And we helped, and we helped him as best you can, so I will not sit here and listen, and hear you say that my colleagues don't help people. That is a fault.
You didn't help, you didn't help our, you didn't help the city.
Continue.
I don't care what person you might have helped, I know you helped Bo Cabbage, if that's what you're referring to.
No.
That you went out of your way to help Bo Cabbage.
We're referring to the people that came here with problems that we helped.
But have you went out to help the citizens of Scranton?
Yes, we have.
What are you going to do about the one point nine? I know you don't have to answer it, don't answer it now.
That's the Pennsylvania Utility Commission.
I don't care what they are, we're a whole new charter city. We don't have to do what the state says. As usual, you're suing, the state telling them that, that we don't have to do that.
The Pennsylvania Utility Commission, you have to listen.
We're a whole new charter, we don't have to abide by state laws. This is what you said, and this is what the administration said, and we're suing that for that, too. So, how you can sit there and tell us that's this or that, it's not. You have sitting there and done what you consider doing people favors. Maybe you did do a lot of people's favors.
No, they weren't, Mr. Spragley, you're way, you're way off base tonight.
What do you call that? Is that a favor you were going to do to the man?
We tried to help Mr. Cerebro endlessly.
Did you help him?
As best we could, yes, we did.
Yeah, you, no.
Yes, we did.
How?
As best we could.
How?
We had a team out there, they tried to help him, it didn't work. He went on to someone else, now maybe someone else can help him. That was his decision.
It's your job to help the citizens, not anyone else.
We did.
It's your job, you're for yours. You should do turnover backwards and forward, you should go out there with an auger, if you had to, and drain out his pipe, if that's what his problem is. I have sit and watched, you tear things from the city. This parking garage was a fiasco. You can cover it up anywhere you can. Why there isn't a federal investigation, I'll never know.
Because there's nothing there.
No, there is something there. When you sell a garage for a dollar, that was bringing three hundred thousand dollars in, and then re-lease it, something is wrong somewhere, and that's the truth. It's not why. You can't cover up something like that.
That's why, that's why there's no investigation, Miss Spragley, there's nothing wrong there.
No, the right people ain't being told, or it's being done. I'm asking for federal investigation. The FBI is the only one that can really come in and look at all these problems.
Did you contact the FBI?
I shall, because that's the only thing we can do to save the city.
There's nothing there.
We can't let you continue to run this city down into nothingness. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Anyone else?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. I wasn't going to talk again tonight, just came to observe and to wish Mr. Wexler the best going forward. But I couldn't sit here when the gentleman was saying about that you haven't done anything for the city, because I know both things that I've come to the city about have been taken care of. I know that when I ride around in the hill section, and I can see the street signs, I'm very pleased, and other people have said the same thing, that the street signs that were there. Last week, when I was here because of the road conditions and the repairs in the city, I had very good positive results of that, and I don't have my paper with me, but they did put me in touch with, it was in Pennsylvania, six-one-one, or seven-one-one, or something like that, and they were very helpful, and they did come and take care of some issues of cars being splashed and dirtied up because they had such big holes, and you wash your car one day and it's dirty the next, but they did come and fix that this week. So, when I hear the gentleman saying that about the city, I, I do, I just had to say something, that I've been very, had very positive responses for anything that I've come to you for, and I do thank you for that. And I am working on another project, and Mr. Wexler, he won't be here, because it's taking more time than I thought, but hopefully, by next year, I'll have another project that I'm working on. But I do like to come with facts and figures when I do come. So, I do thank you for that, and Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth Order, five A, motion.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. Couple brief items to touch on, some housekeeping from last week. I just want to thank Mr. Santoli for getting out to Maple Street on that quick response, he was out there the next day, to take a look at that tree, that has been marked for removal, and that situation will be taken care of. Also, Ms. Jeffries, there's, I got a follow-up from the city engineer about that roadwork and making it more publicly known. He thinks it's very feasible to do a public notice. He thinks that's the best way to get it out there for most people, just to put a public notice out on roadwork that's being done when it comes into his office. So, that, that should help, that should help get the word out there on when it's going to be done. What else am I on here? I just want to throw my get-wells out to Mr. Gahan, he's having a road to recovery, I wish him a speedy recovery. And I also want to send out a deep heartfelt thank you to Mr. Wexler. Joe, you served with, with great honor and hard work since I've been here, and I know even before I've been here. You're a testament to what the job means to the city and means to us as colleagues. You've been nothing but supportive to us, and I know via email, phone calls, texts, he was always available to me, and he is going to be sorely. Very much, I'm proud to call you a colleague, and even more so proud to call you my friend. So, thank you very much, Joe, you, you really have helped me grow in this position as well. Thank you. And finally, I just want to send out a very Merry Christmas to everybody out there, and a happy and safe New Year. And again, it's been an honor serving this year, and I can't wait to come back in January and, and get some more stuff done. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just a couple of brief items. First, the housekeeping item, a memo was sent out, and just to inform the public, council will be meeting on January first, as was mentioned, for our reorganization. Our first regularly scheduled meeting will be on January eighth, which is a Monday, council meetings will be on Mondays next year, at 6:00 PM. A caucus will, will proceed every meeting at 5:15, so our caucuses are going to be a little bit longer, and the meetings are going to begin at six. One citizen's request I want to mention, I was contacted by a business owner who has a furniture company, and he had a, he had a delivery crew go out on Theodore Street in a box truck. And anyone that knows Theodore Street, the railroad bridge there is in very poor condition. And even worse, that bridge is only eleven foot, two inches. Most box trucks are eleven-six. Now, this is actually pretty common throughout the city, there's a number of other bridges that are much smaller, but this one has no markings. So, as the driver drove up, there was no indication that this bridge was too low for his truck to fit under. So, of course, when he drove to it, the top of the, top of the truck went away. And to make matters worse, it was a snowy day, and another resident driving down the hill slid into the truck. So, it was a real disaster over there. So, I have some pictures I'm going to send to our city clerk. I want to ask if we could send a urgent memo to the DPW to get signage up there. Going, I believe it's one, one direction, there is a very small sign, but going the other direction, there's no signage at all stating that the bridge is a low clearance and that box trucks will not fit under. And this wasn't even, this wasn't a tractor-trailer, this was a furniture delivery truck going to deliver to, to one of our residents. So, hopefully, that's something that can be taken care of immediately before, before this happens again. I'd like to echo what Mr. Perry mentioned, and thank Councilman Wexler for his leadership and support over these last four years. I think we voted together, jeez, almost every time, maybe once, once or twice, we differed. So, if it wasn't for Council President Wexler's leadership, the city would not be in the position it is in to have no tax increases the last two years, and be on the verge of leaving Act Forty-seven distress status. So, I want to commend him, and the next council president will certainly have large shoes to fill.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan.
Finally, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to those of the Jewish faith, and a Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, a couple brief comments as well. First, I want to comment briefly on State Representative Mike Carroll's action on the House floor this week. I've known State Representative Mike Carroll for quite a few years now, and I will tell you, Mike's actions this week in Harrisburg, as they relate to Representative Hagerty's record of absence, speaks volumes to the person that I know. Mike is an individual of the utmost character and integrity, and the constituents of the one hundred and eighteenth district are very lucky to have him as a rep. To my knowledge, Representative Carroll was the first person to speak out on this issue in Harrisburg, and it takes a special person to speak out when everyone around you is silent. I would also like to thank State Rep. Smallerian Schlossberg for their actions on the floor, following Representative Carroll's lead. I also like to recognize Representative Flynn for his comments and expressing his frustration over this situation. As was mentioned before, this is our last meeting before the holiday break, so I would like to wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, and for everyone else, a Happy Festivus. That's a little Seinfeld reference for the rest of us. And, but seriously, for those of us that are lucky enough to have friends and family around us during the holidays, for those who are lucky enough to be able to give others, to others during the holiday season, please take some time to think of those less fortunate and pay it forward whenever you can. And finally, tonight, I wanted to recognize, because it is the last meeting we will have with Council President Joe Wexler. Joe, it's been a pleasure serving with you the past three-plus years. I hope everyone who is listening tonight understands the sacrifices you have made for our city, but not only to serve our city, but to serve our city the right way. And it's my hope that we will work together long into the future, as we continue to try to effect positive change. To me, you are the very definition of a public servant and a community leader, and I know that as we move forward, you'll stay involved in the community as you always have. I would expect nothing less. So, again, Joe, it's been a pleasure, and thank you for your leadership. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
This evening, my comments are going to be quite brief, and really, what they're going to amount to is just thank yous for everyone that I've been able to work with for the past four years. Our city council staff, who are here every day answering questions, solving problems, are fantastic to work with, Lori Reed and Kathy Carrera. When I hear people say that we don't answer questions and we don't provide any service, I can just take a look at Lori's calendar, take a look at Kathy's calendar. I'll be honest with you, if you want to get something done in Scranton, if you have a problem, you're better off calling the city clerk's office, or Kathy Carrera's desk, or contacting Councilman directly. We do listen to comments at the podium, but it is quite difficult to answer questions as they're sprung on you alive. I've tried to answer every question that's ever been asked from that podium, but when you spring questions in a gotcha, I got you, it, it doesn't work for the person asking the questions, or it doesn't work for the Councilman, either. Recently, we've applied a, a method of even dealing with the administration and providing them questions ahead of time when we have caucuses. Because I've been, as I've been saying all along for the past two years, is that the answers are more important than the questions. There's a lot of issues that have been just, questions that have been thrown out to stir up the pot, and really, nobody even cared what the answers were going to be. It was just a matter of, of attacking someone, or just, as I like to say, stirring of the pot. The amount of people that we've helped through the council office and through the gentlemen that I work with, a lot of them, you'll, you'll never hear, you'll never hear the people that we helped. We get a pothole fixed, we get a curb. We get a pothole fixed, we get a curb fixed, you know, get some yards cleaned up and things like that. A lot of stuff happens that you never hear of, and be honest with you, we never take credit for it. Because we're not here to take credit. We're here to help the citizens, and we do that as well. So I'd like to thank Mr. Perry, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Evans, especially Mr. Gohan in his absence. This council has raised the level of constituent service to a greater level than any other council that I've ever worked with. And I've been working with councils for 25 years. I just didn't plop down in the seat. I was a neighborhood activist and neighborhood president for 25 years before I got here. So I know how this operation works, and I know where we get results and where we don't get results. City council, we're here every week, and I like to say, I think we're the only form of government that's, faces the public live every Thursday night, no, every Monday night. Without any preparation. We don't know what's going to be said at the podium, what type of question, what type of problem, and we have to deal with it here, either if we can right here, or get into it the next day with the council staff. Solicitor menorah has been a, a great help to us as well. And I'm disappointed that in my last meeting here, I have to hear someone say that we didn't do any help here. And that's, I, I can't believe that someone would say that. You can't be any more wrong than that. This council has, has striven to help a lot of people. Mrs. Cerebro, we didn't have any success yet, we're still working on that. Mr. Young had a problem, that's getting resolved. We got streets paved that had never been paved before. We've just done a lot of things that aren't appreciated, and to question our integrity and to question our ability, that's really misplaced. The FBI is welcome to come in here at any time, and if they had wanted to, they would have been here. The Auditor General's been here, the Auditor General's been down, down at Scranton School District, so I would invite any investigation to come to this building. And the one thing I'm not going to miss is having my integrity questioned as I sit here. That's not fair, and it's not right. I don't question anyone else's integrity. And I think to say that is an insult to the people that work every day. And I, I think that was a, a low blow. That's all I have.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth Order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 134, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to approve the transfer of $2 million from account number as noted, FNCB Bank Sewer Clearing Account, to account number as noted, PNC Bank General Fund Account, for the necessary capital budget funding for 2018.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 135, 2017, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by CBTB LLC, doing business as Corner Bistro, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at 7678 South Main Street, Carbondale, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18407, for use at 429 North Main Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18504, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 136, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to allocate $250,000 from economic development funds on a matching basis to Scranton tomorrow to further the prospects of economic revitalization in the downtown section of the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, file of the Council Number 137, 2017, establishing a no parking zone along the northerly side of Greenridge Street, beginning approximately 150 feet west from its intersection with Penn Avenue, and continuing 80 feet to allow for sight distance for a proposed driveway by Mr. George Jenkins for a property located at 921 Greenridge Street.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 138, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a pension trust agreement with the Composite Pension Board to hold approximately $22,910,531.56 of the proceeds from the sale of the assets of the Scranton Sewer Authority in trust until such time as pension reforms have been enacted.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I had a whole thing to talk about in the morning, but I had the under seven. Under was a lock. Under was a lock.
Yeah.
Yeah. craziness.